Okay, 20 seconds starting now.
Welcome back everyone. We will start our deliberations with case number one. It's case number one M dash zero six dash one nine dash two zero. Oh, this will be the request to amend the zoning map by one resoning properties located at one dash five, seven dash nine, and eleven dash fifteen Laura Street from R one low density district to C two community district. Two rezoning of the properties located at six through four through six, eight through eight and a half, and ten Laurel Street. A portion of twelve forty East Main Street from R one low density residential district to R two medium density residential district. And three rezoning the remaining portion of the property located at twelve forty East Main Street and the property located at twelve fifty-two East Main Street from by removing it from the OO overlay district, office district, resigning this to facilitate Rochester City Rochester Police Department, Goodman Section and Neighborhood Service Center, Southeast Quadrant Project. Actions requiring City Planet Commission recommendation to City Council. Need a motion?
Here Carol motioning.
Brad Flower seconds.
Thank you. Discussion.
Pick up the paper. Poolsa was well laid out. I appreciated all of the discussion on the design elements of the building. I know it's not necessarily what we were focusing on today. Certain elements of it are important, of course, but the questions that the commissioners asked during the hearing as well were well answered in terms of design and all of those details, the subdivision or the re-subdivision application that's coming down the pipe makes sense. It all seems to align well.
Yeah, having traveled past that brown field most of my adult life, I'm excited to see the space repurposed. And I'm excited to see policing and neighborhood service centers being embedded together in the neighborhoods. I think that's a huge change culturally back to something we want to see. So yeah, I'm this is great and I love the green roof.
Yeah, sure. All right. Any other concerns? Any other comments?
For it project.
Yep, I think so too. The long deserved.
Yes.
Well, is this the only project Jason Huremsna did not comment on?
No, I think there were several. There were others. Any other comments? Any other questions? Yes, Richard?
We're only concerned with really just the rezoning aspect of it.
Oh, correct.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I've got, you know, my misgivings really have to just do with do you really, you know? Why is that street being?
Partially dedicated?
Yeah, yeah. And yet you don't have the setbacks you need for the parking, et cetera. And then you're using the you're using Laura Street, which is really a dead end residential street now for major access for you know, this neighborhood center parking, which just, you know, seems to me incongruous that it that ought to come off of me, but that's not our issue. Our issue is just the zoning. So I'm good with that.
Yep, you know, and there'll be other times where you'll be able to have input, you know, with once it comes for city council even. So that's available for you as well.
Yeah, okay.
Any other concerns? Any other questions? All right, well, we'll call the question. All those in favor of?
Oh, wait, can you from my benefit, can you please go over the review requirements for zoning map amendments? There's just four of them there.
Uh, let me see.
Second page.
Second page, yes. So the zoning requirements, uh, review for map amendments. A consistency with the city's comprehensive plan and other adopted special area plans. B compatibility with the present zoning and conforming uses of nearby property and with character and with the character of the neighborhood. C substantially suitability of uses proposed in the zoning amendment for the property affected by the amendment. And D availability of public services and infrastructure generally suited and adequate for adequate for uses allowed within the proposed district.
Four checks.
Four checks. I think so also.
Okay.
Right. Anything else that we need to do? There are no exceptions or anything or waivers. So with that being said, ready to vote? So do you want us to go by? We'll, we'll start alphabetically with number one Carrie and move through everyone else.
Carrie Carroll, I vote in favor.
Brad Flower, I vote in favor.
And when you're monitoring, I vote in favor.
Richard Mauser, I vote in favor.
Milton Picchardo, I vote in favor.
Steve Rebholz, I vote in favor.
And Dave Watson, I also vote in favor.
Great. Motion passes seven zero zero.
All right, thank you. And we will move on to the next case, case number two. Case number two, OMA zero five one nine two zero. Uh, the request is to amend the official map of the city of Rochester by restricting vehicular, the vehicular portion of Laurel Street right away approximately the first hundred and thirty feet from East Main Street and actually requiring sitting planet commanding city planet commission recommendation to city council. Motion?
Formal.
Mr. Marlins moved.
Second.
And Mr. Picardo, second. All right, discussion?
I, I'm sorry.
Discussion first before we vote.
We're not there. We're not there.
With OMAs, with OMAs, I just like saying, yeah, makes sense.
Yep. I mean, if it's fits what what is needed to make the project go forward.
That's right.
Yeah, agreed.
And frankly, this is Carrie again. I like these public areas. They're few and far between.
Oh, they're great.
They're beautiful and they add value. So yeah, it's kind of a no brainer for me.
Yeah, you know, and I think that's something that I hope that we'll see more of in the future. That again, that brings the neighborhood in with the business in with the in with the city operation. And I think the more we have of that, I think the better that those relationships can be. All right. Any other discussion? Any other concerns?
Thank you guys for elaborating on your decision. That really helps me with my decision writing. So I appreciate it. I get the method behind the madness. So.
Understand. All right, anything else? Anyone wants to share?
I just want to say that I just want to say like Tom said earlier that the context of this of this resolution is with the with the previous resolution.
Yes.
What supports it. I think that's important to know to notice.
Yeah, hand in hand. All right, so we will now vote all those in favor, starting with Carrie or all those want to wish to vote.
Carrie Carroll voting in favor.
Brad Flower vote in favor.
And when you're modeling.
Richard Mauser voting in favor.
Milton Picchardo voting in favor.
Steve Rebholz voting in favor.
And Dave Watson voting in favor.
Motion passes by a record of seven zero zero.
Thank you. And we will move on to the next case, case number three. Case number three, OMA zero six one nine two zero to amend the official map of city of Rochester by abandoning Theodore Street to serve the proposed CDS Life Transitions Development Project and actually requiring city planet commission recommendation to city council. Motion?
Brad Flower motion.
Carrie Carroll second.
Thank you. Okay, discussion?
We need affordable housing. This project has been moving along. I think it's a good use of land. I think they'll take good care of it as part of their campus and seems very positive.
Yep. Another great project, well organized, well structured, another incremental step towards getting it done.
Yep. And again, you know, the process to change the map brings everything into line. That's what we need to do.
Right. And doesn't that become therefore taxable property?
Yes.
All right.
It does what we need, right?
Yes.
Understand. Okay, any other discussion? Any other concerns? All right, uh, ready to vote? So are you with Carrie?
Carrie Carroll voting in favor.
Brad Flower in favor.
And when you're modeling in favor.
Richard Mauser in favor.
Milton Picchardo in favor.
Steve Rebholz voting in favor.
And Dave Watson voting in favor.
Motion passes by a vote of seven zero zero.
Thank you. And we'll do case number four. Case number or file number E two one dash one nine dash two zero thirty-nine Amar Street to establish an eleven space ancillary parking lot and to consider the alternative parking plan for four spaces to serve an existing multifamily dwelling and propose five attached single family dwellings, townhouses as part of the ninety-three Mars Street project and actually requiring city planet commission approval. Any motion? In that bitch, Mr. And second?
Carrie Carroll seconding.
Thank you. Okay, discussion?
So let's, let's focus in. We're really this specifically, I know we were doing re-subdivision or we were talking about subdivision before, but that's done. And now we're focusing on just the alternative parking plan, which to me makes this. That's right. Sorry. Thank you. Which makes this, um, I mean, it's, we can kind of, I know we've gone through the whole parking, let's make sure we count enough spaces kind of thing before quite a bit on different projects too. I, I, I don't. I know there's a lot of contention about design and what does it look like? And where's the trash going to be? And we can walk through all of those if we really care, but this is about parking.
Yes.
So I think we need to focus on, are we hitting the hurdle? Do we, is there the application? Does it go through and say, yep, we have solved the problem in some way, shape or form about having enough parking spaces to suit the need?
Yep, absolutely. What is your take?
I believe so, but I think in similar, you know, you know, I'm famous for this, guys, where I just say, great, how many for bus? How many for this? How many for this? So I, I think we do that exercise and we, we understand based on what Matt had had kind of proposed. I know there's a bike rack involved. There's parking out front. So if I, we can do that exercise, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, I think the design on this was significantly improved over what we originally saw. It was, you know, part of the parking lot was on the second lot and it sort of went in on one area and then came out on the other so that pedestrians had to cut across. And I think it's not perfect, but I really like this design a lot better. I think it's safe enough. I think there's more than enough kind of travel path. And twenty thirty-four basically says we have to be designing first for pedestrians and the urban surrounding, not vehicles and vehicle storage. And I think this is kind of a good compromise between the additional bike storage and it just, it works better. It's not perfect, but I absolutely can live with it.
And he also, he also addressed all the concerns about the lighting issues that we had. And I, you know, honestly, putting individual toters is huge. It's, you know, I, one of the big concerns was just the one big bin trash bin, how overloaded is it going to get? He solved it. Great. You've got toters behind all the, all the townhouses now.
Yeah, exactly.
And yeah, I, I guess, um, yeah, it's a big improvement, but I'm still a little concerned like Steve said about the getting into the sidewalk. I have to say just for the record and also for snow removal. I don't think this is the best location for the, for the trip for the trash containers, but, um, I mean, they, they did work hard enough for me to want to see that they made an effort, but obviously it's not perfect.
Between the two, between the two properties, because I, I know it was something that Steve brought up in particular about, you know, how much space is there going to be? Um, and going on this, you know, the quote unquote sidewalk, even though it's at grade. I, I keep thinking back to like all of these properties that exist. I mean, you drive up and down any neighborhood where there is where we're already experiencing a lot more density. And you're seeing single lanes going into parking spaces behind, they exist. I mean, they exist all over the city. And so this two-way thing to me feels fun like us wanting to have a two-way space or enough room for two cars to get by. It exists everywhere else where, where we don't have to have that. And I think by doing that, we're just, we're, we're mandating that there's like all of this impermeable surface that exists just to squeeze two cars by. When it's like, okay, I see somebody pulling in or pulling out. I'm going to pause my car for two seconds and let him get out and get by. It just, I think we're making a mountain out of a molehill.
Well, Brett, let me ask you this, Brett. How many cars in a lot before you say maybe you need two-way aisle? I, you know, I'm.
I, I, I don't judge my decisions based on that, Richard. So I couldn't give you a number. I don't know.
Well, I mean, I just, I just look at him thinking, well, you know, basically, you know, you're using sidewalks here to for access, which just seems kind of awkward. To get it, it's, it looks like he's trying to cram too much onto the property. Now, if you can, if you can write off all the parking that, you know, and put it elsewhere, then it's not an issue.
I think, you know, it's either a sidewalk or it's not a sidewalk. I mean, if it could be used for other purposes, then call it something other specifications for sidewalks that this doesn't meet those specifications. So if he's not a sidewalk, then he's not a sidewalk, then that's fine. Call it a path, whatever, but he's not a sidewalk.
Right now.
Walking through there, not going to feel safe.
Would have occurred.
Yes. So this is Steve Rebholz and that was really my, um, so I didn't hear the, you know, I wasn't at the first hearing, so I didn't hear any of the, you know, the, the opinion. So I wanted to hear folks' opinions, but it seemed to me that we took something that was more pedestrian oriented and made it less pedestrian oriented by, um, by requiring a wider driveway. And so that's what I wanted to hear about. I, I, I think a sidewalk should be a sidewalk and I agree that a one-way pass in many ways is safer than this hybrid of, you know, I could be walking on something I think is a sidewalk and someone comes up behind me and they think it's a driveway. And so, um, you know, there is a point, I think, where a parking lot gets large enough. The zoning code says X number of cars, apparently it's something less than twelve or fourteen. But I think in this case, a proper sidewalk to enhance the, the safe pedestrian access to the townhouses, which would be traditionally accessed, you know, from a sidewalk through the front door. It, to me, I, and so, you know, again, it's, it's probably more of a site plan review kind of an issue. They were trying to solve one problem and I think in doing so, they created a separate problem, which I, I'm quite frankly, more concerned about. I would be more concerned about with people feeling they can just kept pass both ways all the time, no matter what. Because the sidewalk is, is at pavement level, I would, I would feel better from a design standpoint and a safety standpoint, if the sidewalk were a sidewalk and the driveway were a driveway. And I would frankly favor the narrower driveway, but again, I think, you know, the commission weighed in on that earlier and, and this, this proposal was brought forth because of that concern. But I'd be more in favor of waiving the twenty-two feet and keeping it a single lane than, than supporting these sidewalks that are also drivelanes.
I don't, does anybody else feel that way?
Well, sorry, just to clarify, I don't think they were presented as additional drivelanes. It was more the ability to pull off if absolutely needed, sort of as an emergency standoff. It's still a single driveway with sidewalks on either side, which actually.
Well, they are.
Pedestrian access.
Yes. They are included in the proposed width of eighteen feet. So when we look at the waivers, we're not waving twenty-two feet to twelve feet. We'd be waving twenty-two feet to eighteen feet. So they were presented as a driveway in my read of this. That's, I guess that's the nature of my, my concern.
Yeah, driveway that some of it fools you into thinking it's a sidewalk, but it isn't.
So, so really, again, I don't want to come in and turn this thing over. I'm less concerned about the quantity of cars. I think their alternative parking plan is sound. I think the, um, the orientation of the units, you know, does respect, you know, the, the neighborhood context by presenting itself to Marsh Street as, you know, more like a, a single home than, than the townhouses. So again, I'm a little bit late to the party, but I, I just, um, you know, this, this flush sidewalk approach, I, I guess, you know, maybe I don't have enough.
So.
You know, experience with it, but, but it feels like I'm walking in the street. And if I'm going to walk in the street, I think I should know I'm walking in the street, you know, that's all.
Yeah, to acknowledge both Steve and Carrie's point, so the previous proposal was twelve feet and then the current proposal is eight feet, including that. But any conversation or deliberation this evening, you can go back to the previous proposal of twelve and consider this and, and with your classification or however you consider the sidewalks.
Yeah. So that's one of the things I wanted to mention. If there's the desire to have the separation, you can, you can approve this on condition of that occurring. So I guess I'm hearing from Stephen for Richard that there's a desire to have that separation between the driveway and the sidewalk. Is that correct?
I would support that as well. I think that, that I would be willing to give up the width in order to have dedicated sidewalks so that you know that you're on a sidewalk and you, and you know that you're not in the street. Even if that means only one car can get in and get out at a time. I, that's acceptable at this point for me.
I will support, I will support. Wow. And even for on top of the safety, even for cleaning purposes, you know, when it's snow. So it, it, it just brings too many problems that I'll, I'll feel more comfortable making a sidewalk and then have a one lane.
Yes. Yeah, I'm, I'm not concerned about the, the narrowness like Steve says. It's just like driving into your own driveway where you, where you, you one car and when you go in to your own driveway, you don't speed. You, you just turn into it and go to the back and park, you know, widely if you have the space. So this is not different than that. But I, but I do believe that you have to define a drive, uh, the driveway from, from the sidewalk. Just, I mean, you don't need it. I think you've made it more, more danger that more dangerous that way.
Um, yeah. I'm, I'm looking at the, at the plan for at lot one. I'm just wondering, could, you know, I don't know, does it make sense to have it a little what? Maybe I'm just trying to game this too much, but you know, allow the way to pull off to the side as they're trying to head out to allow the car coming in to get past them.
I, that's exactly what he's trying to do with the, with the sidewalks.
Yeah, but yeah, but he's doing it the whole length. And I'm saying along the townhouses, that's not a good thing. On that side, on the other side on lot one, it's like, well, you could probably make it a little wider. Where you can pull over before, you know, and, and just not the whole length, not the whole length, but just allow for somebody is trying to get out to get out of the way without going back and all the way up into the lot. You see what I mean? That the, the sidewalk as exists jogs over at that point on lot one. I don't want to design it.
It seems, I don't know, to me, it's, to me, it doesn't seem a big enough thing to condition.
Okay, that's fine. I'm just looking at going, I, I really think the sidewalk at the townhouses needs a curb from running, getting run over.
Designated curb for this, for the both sidewalks, both sides.
Yeah, probably, you know, yeah, you're probably right on that because I mean, it's not like somebody's driveway where you only have a few cars going in. You got more going in and out. So you probably ought to have that kind of protection.
That in that, in that control.
Yeah. Yeah. I, you know, my, my primary concern is, I think, I think is you're going to get a lot of people walking on that, you know, on the sidewalk side where the townhouses are.
And they should be working on the sidewalk, not on the street.
Yeah.
So it sounds like you guys want that you are leaning towards a condition with, um, like with curbing for both side.
Both sidewalks.
Okay.
Yep. And even if that means that the, that the street or that the driveway is only with twelve feet.
Yeah. So we'll go back, we'll go back to what was originally proposed in that width.
Right.
That width is what we'll be waving, um, with the condition of those curve with curbing.
Yeah, that way, you know, at least we're giving, giving up the width for safety for the sidewalks and delineation.
Yeah, there's, there's an ancillary benefit too. And you're like, when you're shrinking it down, something psychologically happens. You're like, great, I'm not on a boulevard where I can fly down this thing as I'm parking. It's like, oh, it's much skinnier now. I have to go slower.
Yeah.
So is the paved area staying the same?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, got you.
Yep, yep. Okay, so, uh, any other questions regarding really the, uh, that's the ancillary parking and the driveway? Then we can move on to look at the, uh, alternative parking plan.
So I, I just want to get it on record. So you're, you're choosing to waive everything that is not in compliance for the ancillary parking lot?
That is not in compliance?
setbacks. Parking aisle width, driveway width.
And the driveway width or yeah, the driveway width that's being waived is the previous proposal, not the current.
That's right.
Yes. Does it answer your question, Jill?
Well, there's a couple other no's on there. So I just want to make this clear. So, um, yep. And so, uh, don't forget that it does have a dumpster and, and you're okay with that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
And then the other one is the ancillary parking lot will not be equipped and controlled and you're okay with that?
We're okay with that too. Yeah, I am.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. So we're all set with the ancillary parking. Want to move on to the alternative parking plan?
Yeah, I think that absolutely addresses the issue and is fine.
And, uh, Brad, did you have any other concerns about going to those numbers or do you have not have a need for that?
I never thought I'd become the alternative parking plan expert, but yes, I like them.
No, please, please go through the numbers because, you know, we use that to write up the decisions.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, they have on-street, uh, in the application, there's non-street parking, deficiency mitigation, counting three on-street spaces towards the deficiency.
Yes.
There's onsite bicycle parking. Didn't you say there was going to be a couple spaces in that thing?
I think you said four. Didn't it say four?
There were three or four bike lockers in the back.
And, and what's amazing is he's, he's only counting a half of a space towards his actual deficiency, which is like, oh, okay.
One five, yeah.
Doesn't that, Jill, doesn't that?
Yeah, well, yeah. So you don't have to stick with that. So if you, if you determine that on-street parking is three and you think that one entire space is, uh, you can attribute for the, um, on-street onsite bicycle parking, you can do that. So you don't have to follow what has been laid out for you.
Got it. And got it. And what, and so we're at a deficiency of four. I'd feel comfortable saying on-street reducing it to two because we have heard some concerns from the neighborhood people that the on-street isn't as robust as perhaps it's being discussed right now.
Yes.
So drop that to two and then each the, um, the bicycle parking certainly gets one and then transit credit can get one too.
So it's a total of five?
Yeah. Uh, that would, sorry, that would be four.
Two, one and one. Two, one and one. Yes. My new math. Okay, any other issues regarding the alternative plan? With the numbers indicated noted? Okay, any other discussion on either the ancillary parking or the alternative parking plan? We'll vote once for, for the whole thing. Correct?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
All the city staff.
Oh, yes. All right. So all those in favor of voting?
Are we missing one here? How many spaces do I see now?
He has eleven.
The currently parking spaces.
In the current plan? I thought there were eleven.
Okay. And he needed to have fifteen.
Yeah, there were eleven. There were eleven.
Okay.
All right.
All right, yeah.
All right. So, uh, again, this is our city plant commission approval, all those, all those in favor, uh, starting with Carrie.
Carrie Carroll voting in favor.
Brad Flower in favor.
And when you're modeling in favor.
Richard Mauser in favor.
Milton Picchardo favor.
Steve Rebholz in favor.
And Dave Watson in favor with the considerations that we have addressed about the width and the sidewalk. about the width and the sidewalk delineation.
Those considerations are noted and will be conditioned, uh, as part of this approval. So by, um, a vote of seven zero zero, this passes, this motion passes.
Thank you. Good discussion. Uh, moving right along. Case number five. Eight fourteen South Clinton Avenue to continue live entertainment at the Firehouse Saloon, uh, from two AM daily to, until two AM daily. Uh, established by special permit E dash four nine dash oh nine dash one zero and actually requiring city planning commission approval. Motion?
Eric Carroll motion?
Eric Carroll. And you, Henry, a Marlin second?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Discussion.
Um, I'm, I'm curious, uh, I mean, have the, is there any like police record of, of police calls there for noise or anything like that? I don't think so, but.
As far as I know, there, there have not been any in, in the, in the years that, that we've given him the use of the building. So again, I'm, I'm very, I say we give it to him permanently. He's done a good job.
Yeah.
I agree. About the five, yeah.
You know, I mean, he did everything that we asked him to do and, you know, again, we, no, no, no reports from the, from, from, from the, uh, police, neighbors, community association.
Yep.
That's what we want. That, that's why we conditioned temporarily to make sure that those issues get fleshed out.
If you've had a permit for 10 years and you have nothing but support at the public hearing, I motion permanent.
Yeah.
Yep. That's what I'm duck, as they say. All right. Any other discussion?
Carrie Carroll voting in favor?
Thank you.
Brad Flower in favor.
O'Neal Marlin in favor.
Richard Mouser in favor.
Milton Pichardo in favor.
Steve Rebholz in favor?
And Dave Watson in favor.
Okay. By a vote of seven zero zero, this motion passes or this application is approved.
Thank you. And moving on to case number six. Uh, two ninety-two Parkway uh, to establish retail sales and service nail salon operating between the hours of nine AM to eight PM in a vacant non-conforming structure and actually requiring city planning commission approval. Motion?
Our motions.
How do, oh Bradley? Oh.
Bradley, Bradley, Henry second.
And you hand me a second. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, discussion? I think, I think a good use of the property.
Yes.
You know, again, I didn't, I, I didn't understand where the concerns were for the church. If, if they were using the, using the building, uh, for, for parking as well. So, but again,
And if anything, I think that's, um, it's, it's a, a lack of education on what's being planned or what's actually going to happen. It just seems like the communication didn't fully connect there.
Yeah.
Um, I, I don't know if we want to go to the, I don't know what we could possibly condition to do that, but like, you, you know, some potential of like, hey, play nice with your neighbors. Let them know who you are, like do an introduction or something might be a nice, like, this is what we're actually doing with the site. It's nothing to be afraid of and we're all going to be here together kind of thing. I don't know.
Yeah.
Brad, um, we can actually recommend that in the decision. And, and the other thing is the, the applicants are actually in, there's, they're watching deliberations. So I, I'm sure that they are hearing, um, what you're verbalizing.
Yes.
Yeah. I, I don't see any issues. And I, just to address the fact that they mentioned there was traffic issues, it's already on a very,
Business street.
Yeah, it's already, I, business street, ulterior street. So, uh, you know, I don't think that if not, e- even if that business is not there, they're going to continue with the same traffic that they own that.
And the property has been sitting there. Remember the, um, the daycare center that never happened? Um, so I think it's a good use of the, of the space on, on support.
Mm-hmm.
I was going to say the same thing. Bringing a vacant property back into use with a new small business that's, they've put a ton of thought into developing their client base before opening. It just, it's a win-win-win.
Yep. And you know, obviously meets the needs and goals of the comprehensive plan, you know, small businesses, neighborhood businesses.
Women-owned businesses.
There you go. Right on. All right. All right. Any other discussion?
Carrie Carroll voting in favor?
Thank you.
Brad Flower in favor.
Hey, can I just interject real quick?
Yes, ma'am.
Tom Wirth, do you need us to go over the code compliance here? Uh, just the stuff that's covered in the staff report in regards to, uh, non-conforming use? I'm getting it.
Yes, please. Yes, please. Tom, I, we'll do it. We're doing it.
Do it.
Do it.
Dave, do you mind leading us and just kind of going through the, um, items A through D in regards to this, uh, the review for this C and the certificate of non-conformity? Or non-conforming structure use?
Uh, you want me to do that?
Uh.
Or Tom?
You can. I think you should do it.
Okay, I'll do that. All right. So we'll look at the first page of the staff report, code, code compliance. A, the building is, uh, is a designated billing of historic value.
No.
No, I think that was indicated that
Yep.
It was not, not the case.
It is not.
B, the condition or economic life of, of the building or structure.
So this is when you guys, I guess, I, I'm, I'm get, I'm getting from here is when you were talking about returning an underutilized vacant structure.
Structure back, back to the rolls and back to vitality for the neighborhood and for the community.
Yep.
And I think
And here, I'm,
Go ahead.
This building was, this, even though it's an R one district, it was built as commercial and so maintaining that kind of a lighter, but still commercial use, I think is consistent with, um, with that, um, standard.
Yes, right. All right. Any other com- comments on B? All right. C, the potential use of the billing, uh, for neighborhood services use, service uses. And I think, yeah, neighbors, neighborhood can use services.
Actually after COVID nineteen, you know how many women need their nails done right now?
Probably not as many as need haircuts. All right. Anything else for C? All right. D, the potential for employment opportunities in the neighborhood.
Even address.
Sure.
Yes.
Sure.
Yep. Yeah, you know, we may not get a lot of people who, who, who can do nails, but they may find somebody. Oh, okay. Those are the four that we needed, correct?
Yes, that's it. All right. I am satisfied. Thank you.
All right. All right. Any other discussion? All right, Carrie? You're voting?
I am voting in favor. Carrie Carroll.
Thank you.
Brad Flower in favor.
O'Neal Marlin in favor.
There I am. Richard Mouser in favor.
Milton Pichardo in favor.
Steve Rebholz in favor?
Dave Watson in favor.
Okay, this special permit has been approved by a vote record of seven zero zero.
Thank you. And moving on to case number seven. Four oh nine Alexander Street to establish a seven space ancillary parking to serve a banquet facility at seven twenty-seven East Main Street and actually requiring city planning commission approval. Motion?
Brad Flower moves.
Thank you, Brad. Brad?
Steve Rebholz second.
Thank you, Steve.
Nice to see you.
Discussion?
I, I thought that it was probably one of the better prepared applications we've seen when it comes to engaging everybody around the site. It was, you know, all neighborhoods that didn't even, that weren't even really next to it.
Right.
But who have been very vocal at other hearings about these types of things. They were pulled in to have discussions with these folks, which is, was an interesting thing. I mean, it was, and I, I think part of that was because there is a, there's very clearly an issue with the neighbor, right? There, there is a very clear issue with the neighbor that, you know, we see the applicant side of it. We see the, the piece that came in, uh, in opposition. Um, that side of it, I don't know where the truth lies, somewhere in between the two perhaps. But it, we wish they could have worked well together, right?
Sure. Oh, yeah. That's always our hope.
But it does, it does make it viable for him to, to revitalize this property.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. You know, and I think even though you do, you, you look at seven spots as not being a whole lot for a banquet facility, at least it's more than they have right now.
Right.
And it supports twenty thirty-four again, not to sound like a broken record, but we're pushing for urban density. We're pushing for diverse uses. It's an entertainment district border. It's on a main corridor. So it, it kind of ticks all the boxes for me for reusing an existing building. I mean, obviously the parking that we're talking about, the parking lot, but the reality is it's contingent on this banquet facility or it's contingent to this banquet facility. So it, it makes sense to me.
Yeah, I think the big thing.
I wish, I really do wish we have more lighting, especially because the place is so narrow. Um, yes, the rendering is fine and it's showing that they're going to be adding lighting to the building itself. But I, I wish there will be a little more lighting in, in that property. It's just, there's so many properties around it. We don't know what's going to happen. But I just, I just want to feel comfortable that in that area and that lot, they're going to apply it into maneuver that really tough turn that they're going to have to do. Because if that seven twenty-seven ever, ever get, um, sold and they do something right, right at the property line, that's going to be even narrower, uh, always, you know, always. So I just wish there were a little more lighting.
I guess, no, with that, uh, Milton, uh, maybe a question for, 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 uh, Jill. Is that not part of the site plan review, uh, look at lighting, uh, lighting even as it exists or as it could exist as part of the site plan?
It is. And as the applicant noted, um, there is a light on the, um, the pole.
Pole.
So, yeah, so there are some cases when we have an ancillary parking lot that we find that that is going to, to work, that's going to be acceptable. Um, you know, in, in some cases you don't want, you want them to be lit just the right amount.
Right, not too much, yeah.
Yeah, not too much that it spills over to neighboring properties.
Right.
You want it to be present.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And then also with the additional requirement, the things that you have to waive for ancillary parking lots, um, lighting is one of them and it is called out here in the code review.
Okay, so the code review to code compliance.
Yes.
What, where is, uh, where is the light? I'm looking at, I know he mentioned, since it's not, uh, uh, noted on the site plan. Is it on the east side? Is it on the?
I know Tom Kiesior is on this call. I'm going to stall for him to meet. There he is.
Um, I have the, I have the site plan up. I believe it was just over the property line. So the reason you're waiving it is because none of the lighting is technically on this property.
Ah.
So the rear of seven twenty-seven is going to be lit. There's going to be a, I think there might even be a patio back there. So his plan was to light the back of the property, but not light this individual property.
Jill, do you want me to share my screen?
Yeah, do, do you guys see this?
Oh, yeah.
You can see that.
So wait a second. So it does not light the property that we approved?
Yeah. So you'd have to waive lighting on this property. He's proposing lighting on the other property. And that was how we talked to the neighbor about, does the neighbor feel comfortable with him adding additional lighting next to his house? So they thought the best option was to not put lighting on this property, but that's up to you. You know, you can, um, you, you don't have to waive that if you don't want.
Milton, I've got, Milton, if you check the Google Maps, um, like the actual street view. I mean, it's, it's right across from, I mean, it is like right where the entrance is going to be. There's a big old street lamp.
Right. I, I saw, I saw it now. It's, um, but it's, it's facing the, all the property.
Facing which? Sorry.
Jill.
There's that one.
I, I just want, the applicant in the hearing, and correct me if I'm wrong, stated that there is a nearby light pole that has the light and it shines then onto the, um, proposed parking lot.
Oh, yeah, right across the street.
Well, not across the street, like, um, nearby.
Oh, yeah, that's in the back of his property, right?
Got it.
The other property.
Anna, if you bring up that Land Tech survey, it might be on, uh, it's kind of in the middle of the packet. It shows up there. Uh, there. Okay, go there. And, and right at the corner of lot twelve and lot eleven, that little pointed corner, that's the light pole you're going to need to drive around to get to the driveway.
Okay.
That's the one that, uh, Jill held up in the photograph.
Okay. Well, the, I, actually I feel a little more comfortable with the light pole is, is there because that's where the narrow turn is going to happen. So the light pole there, I feel just a tiny bit more comfortable.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion? Before we go to the, uh, code compliance requirements?
No, I just got to say that if I was in that parking lot, I would drive out to the west. I, I mean, I'm just looking, realistically speaking, I mean, you know, even though it's illegal. I mean, I just, you know, I, I, I think he's probably, you know, he got it. He has to get this in there to be legal about it, but I, I don't see people trying to do that maneuvering to get in, out of that parking lot. I see him going west.
But I think that's, that's contingent upon him to make sure that he makes that exit known. And if they go the other way, then that's, that's, you know, that's.
I agree. I think, I think if you want to go west, that's your issue. Well, he's, he needs to provide you a way out.
Yes.
Where he's, where he's.
I believe the applicant stated that he would be putting up signage. So I, I mean, if you wanted to condition the approval on the placement of signage directing people as to how to exit, that's something you could do.
I'm not, I'm not concerned about that.
Yeah. When, when there's a will, there's a way. That bride is going to get married, I tell you. She's going to.
Not going to stop him.
Okay, Anna, should I start going through the, um, code compliance? Go through the ones with no or yes?
Uh, the things with no are not in compliance.
Okay. So we have to waive those?
Correct.
Okay. So, uh, everybody on the first page of the staff report, uh, code compliance, A, ancillary parking lots and garages shall only be allowed in districts where the principal use is located in a less, less restrictive district.
Yeah. So the proposed banquet or the banquet facilities in the C two and
Right.
Yeah, you got it.
Yep. So, uh, you know, I think I, I'm willing to waive that.
Yep.
Well, it's already there.
Well, yeah.
It is.
Again, by wa- by waiving it, we're, we're giving it credibility or legitimacy.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, B, ancillary parking lots and garages shall be subject to provisions of one twenty dash one seventy-three off-street parking in all of the lot area, yard and bulk requirements applicable to zoning district. And again, because it is not, um, this is located in an R two uh, requiring the case screening.
He did say that he's adding the requisite screening.
Requisite, yeah, uh, screen for residential. So he, we can wait. I would be willing to waive that. Uh, lighting, again, we, we just talked about that with the, uh, and again, you know, maybe make a, a recommendation or a consideration uh, that lighting, the actual lot itself be looked into to see if it's necessary, given the light out, out of the street. Um, maximum lot coverage, uh, required is fifty, but they're proposing seventy. So we don't, we don't have to waive that, correct?
Um, the lot coverage?
Yes.
Yeah, you, you'd be waiving it because it exceeds the.
Oh, okay. Okay. It's required is fifty, but he's asking for seventy-three.
Right. It's already a lot though.
Yeah, and, and it's there. It already exists. So I would, I would say yes, let's waive that.
Well, yeah, but so keep in mind, you know, it did receive the approval in the eighties. It was never acted upon. So to us, the reason it's here is because it's a zero.
Okay.
Right? It's, it's a nothing.
Yep. So again, he's offering something. Right?
Well, he, he's trying to legalize that portion of it.
Yes, I understand. Okay. So, and then the minimum side yard setback?
Well, well, wait, let's go back and address the, the minimum lot coverage. Like what are the upsides for waiving it?
So for me, I think that.
Go ahead.
Oh, sorry. I was just going to say, you know, I see kind of the overriding use as reactivating uh, the property that this lot will serve.
Right.
To me, um, the, uh, the lot coverage, although not totally compliant, he's also not totally paving it. He's To me, um, the, uh, the lot coverage, although not totally compliant, he's also not totally paving it, he's respecting, you know, kind of a front yard on Alexander, but the overriding importance of reactivating this um dormant and large facility to me um would, would be how I justify that.
Yeah.
Brad?
Sa, seven space, yeah, to that point, a banquet hall, we've all said, you know, is seven spaces even you know, it, yeah, yes, I think seven spaces is great. Um, rather than to scale it back just for a coverage, this is like, this is giving us the, the best of both worlds, we're giving him seven spaces for a use that might need even more spaces, but A, we're trying to minimize um cars in twenty thirty-four.
And I think, I think also what it does too is that it, it takes that piece of property back to where it was used before in a previous life with the driveway on that, on that side.
Right.
Which I think is, again, consistent with the neighborhood, you know, those, those kinds of issues. Okay, anybody else? Any other concerns?
No, I was gonna say, I feel kind of the same way about the side yard setbacks. It's abutted upright to another building, the residential on the other side is already protected. So it's, it's not like we have a zero-foot setback onto Mon Pot Kettle's front porch, it's an urban area, so I think it's appropriate for the, for the space.
Good. Alright, and then D, uh, the proposed uh ancillary parking lots and garages shall be equipped with control to discourage illegal parking, vandalism or other unlawful nuisance creating activities. When so equipped, such lots and garages may be open twenty-four hours a day. Uh, and he said, no, the proposed lot will not be equipped to discourage vandalism or nuisance creating activities. I would, again, I would say waive that again, because it's on Alexander Street, you're not gonna have, I think, as much, as high per uh, uh uh pedestrian traffic as maybe some other areas.
Agreed.
I have to observe that this one is probably the one you waive the most, it's like
Oh, yeah.
In some contexts, it's counterproductive to like walk fence off or put gates in front of lots like this.
Yeah, they're, they're small and then they would stand out.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, the other ones, no, no, yes, 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 yeah, so landscaping, do we have to do that? Uh, Anna?
Yes, we do.
Oh, no, landscaping and screening buffering, well, I thought we already did that in the first one.
It's the same argument in essence, it borders a parking lot.
Same as
Put a rock, it'd be nice to put a water garden in, but it's not required, really.
So that would be the same as B, that we, they were talked about setback and screening from residential. You got that, Anna?
Yes, I did. Thank you.
Okay, alright, you know, anything else we have to do? I think that's it.
Yep.
Any other discussion, any other concerns? Alright, voting?
Kerry Carroll voting in favor?
Brad Flower in favor.
Richard Mouser in favor.
Milton Pichardo in favor.
Steve Rebholz in favor?
Uh, Dave Watson in favor.
Okay, by a vote of seven zero zero, uh, this special permit is approved.
Thank you. And last but not least, number eight. Three, I'm sorry, eight thirty-six to eight thirty-eight South Clinton Avenue to establish a rooming house, recovery houses of Rochester containing seven rooming units and actually requiring city, city planning commission approval. Motion?
I'll move it, so move.
Thank you, Milton.
Welcome.
Thank you, you have, alright, discussion?
I, I think that the property is appropriately located uh between the church and, and the other building. I, um, I, I think it's a good use for that house.
Yeah, I, I agree, I mean, the, uh, I think the services they provide, I think is, is, is great for the community, um, and, um, I know the concerns of maybe having, you know, all the liquor stores and places around it, but unfortunately, that could happen in, any, anywhere, really. I'm more in favor of the services, I think it's, it's a good use of the house.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's too bad that we need services like this, but we definitely need services like this, so let's get them out there, get it available and start helping people get back on the road to recovery and living happy, healthy lives.
I agree with that as well, you know, I think a good location, I think the size is adequate. Uh, it doesn't stand out in, in the, in the community or the neighborhood, I think it blends in and, uh, you know, I think, I think a good plan.
I think the location kind of satisfies, anybody who had a concern about, well, do I want people who are in recovery? Well, there are no real neighbors unless you go a little bit north of there, back, you can't walk there.
Right.
Well, it's, it's pretty isolated and, and I think Van Smith, if, you know, I think he knows the business and if he felt nearby liquor stores would be a total disaster, I don't think he'd back that. I mean, you know, that'd be just asking for trouble, so I think they're probably correct in their perception that, you know, if you want, if you really wanna get a drink bad, you know, walk five blocks if you have to or won't make a difference.
Uh, Anna, you were saying that we have to, again, on the code compliance on page two of the staff report, C, uh, the inhabitable rooms originally designated, designed as bathrooms should be used for the lodging, we have to waive that because we're not sure what
Yeah.
what the room, what the rooms were.
That's correct, so the, so just like we've been waiving the other requirements, this is one that we'd have to waive, this being a requirement of rooming houses. And so we, we, it's hard to discern which rooms were originally designed as uh lodging.
Okay, alright, uh, so I, I, I would be willing to waive that, waive C.
Yeah, I'm gonna defer to staff in this, I think the review was pretty clear and staff has decided that there's adequate space or it's adequate reuse of prior use, and so I'm fine waiving it.
Waive it, yep. Any other questions, any other concerns? Oh, alright, uh, we'll vote, uh, starting with Kerry.
Kerry Carroll loading in favor?
Brad Flower in favor.
O'Neal Marlin, Marlin, Marlin in favor.
Richard Mouser in favor.
Milton Pichardo in favor.
Steve Rebholz in favor?
Dave Watson in favor?
Okay, so uh, this special permit has been approved by a vote of seven zero zero. Um, I just wanna share my screen as we close ourselves out here, Dave.
Yes.
Let me just for any people that are still watching, I just wanna put up contact information.
Oh, okay.
Sorry for it being in a Word doc, it's kind of silly looking, I'm sure, but this is the information that I want to share um a, as you speak and close us out this evening.
Okay, uh, alright, this closes our deliberation. I want to again thank everybody for being patient and consistent and conscientious and all those other things that we got through it. And let's hope we don't have to do too many more of these.
Good job, everyone.
Nice job, team.
Thanks, team.
Thank you, Tom, both Toms, thank you, Anna, thank you, Jill.
I'm gonna end the live stream, okay?
Yes, you can end it.
Thank you.